... Sparkles Yoda or something said in the morning. I'm going to put his face and I think he blinded him and blew his stuff off his hands.
Actually.
Hi. How's everybody?
I don't know. That was Jeffrey.
Hi.
I need to talk to you.
Well, thanks for throwing me out of the bus.
Then we can explain everybody with fleabag.
We've all heard the story.
And I prepared some business stories.
A little bit here.
Hey, I called him Ralph Phillips. And told him.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Well, I do too because he'll never be funny. He'll never sell it.
Sell it on eBay.
See, it's not your high person.
Am I celebrating?
You might meet someone looking. What's that? What's up with my phone? I don't even know that, sorry.
It's, uh, I got something. Not at the sale, but it's our party, right?
That.
We'll call tonight's meeting the Lloyd City Council to order. Uh, Mandy, would you please take a roll call?
Raymond Ponto.
President.
Lloyd Latrell.
President.
Kent Miller.
President.
Matt Adi.
Here.
Lee McMillan.
Here.
Tony Gingler.
Yes.
Andrew Grabon.
President.
Thank you. If you'd stand for the invitation and the pleasure to be here. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for the blessings you give our community. And you say we reap. There's a time to reap and there's time to sow and there's time to harvest. So, we had a great harvest and we thank you for letting this happen in our community. It'll take care of us for a while. Uh, we thank you for the moisture we had and we would take more if you would see to it. Uh, we pray that you protect our servicemen and as they protect us abroad and be with their families as they're deployed out of our country and, uh, give them comfort that their loved ones are being watched over. And also, uh, be with our law enforcement if they do the task of keeping us safe here. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andrew, do you have anything to discuss?
Uh, just as I said earlier, one or two people were complaining about fireworks being done in the middle of the street and causing some traffic issues.
Yeah, that is kind of unsafe. Cars passing through.
No, thank you.
Lee?
I, I kind of spin off of that. I did hear some complaints of people lighting them off in the streets or abroad, you know, uh, in, in public places and not cleaning it up and just cleaning it for somebody else. So, but something.
Okay. Sure. Both of those and then plus the length of time that we're allowed to make a shot of them. Yeah. Lloyd, do you have anything, sir?
I, uh, the only thing I like coming back was a nice display of the lake. They were fighting the weather, but, you know, they was able to get it in and it's still pretty adorable. So, uh, thanks all the businesses and Heather and Jim for all the work that they do on, um, getting that brown. That's no easy task. So, yeah, we want to thank those folks for that.
Katie, do you have anything to discuss?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, just, I guess, to comment on the fireworks, um, and what some other cities have done. Um, last year, uh, Glendale had a concern, um, that they were going as long as they were and as late as they were. For example, you know, 11:30 at night on July 5th, people are shooting them off, you know, and other people are trying to go to bed until they can go to work the next day. Um, so they did make a change and just went first to the fourth. Their hours, I believe, are only till 11:00 p.m. Currently, ours are until midnight, July 1st through 5th. So, that's just, not that you have to do what they did, that's just an idea of, um, something. Um, July 1st had a lot of new, um, legislation that came into effect that will affect us. And you have one thing on the agenda tonight with regard to the insurance proceeds. Um, another is concealed carry for city employees. Uh, we could no longer prohibit that. It is currently, in our current personnel policy, we do prohibit, um, employees from carrying concealed carry, um, if they have, anyway, we can't, um, we can't prohibit that anymore. The reason I didn't bring that change is because that'll just be incorporated into our new personnel policy. Uh, open carry obviously is prohibited and there will be, um, a lot of language about, you know, if, if they do carry, obviously, it's not in the course of their employment. If they get hurt, somebody else gets hurt, it's, it's not a city workers' comp issue. It's a whole list of, um, things that the league had suggested that we implement with that. Yes.
Is that just for municipalities? It was out across the board.
It's my understanding that's all government employees, is my understanding.
But not private businesses.
Right.
It's really still.
And, um, as far as in buildings, um, as you know, our building, we went through this, we don't have the quote adequate security measures that are required, so we cannot prohibit that here. Adequate security now requires an armed personnel, um, at all times. Um, we don't have that. Um, there's some talk and from the league that we could do that for this room for specific purposes, but again, we'd have to have metal detectors, armed security, all of that. Um, so that's just a little bit on that. That will probably change every year. I, that's just, uh, something that we're probably going to always have to deal with is that, that law that will change. Um, the last thing is not a, not a huge issue for us is political signs. Uh, we, uh, cities cannot prohibit, um, political signs unless they have P traffic and such. Chris has worked up some language for that. Uh, we already have that in our current, well, zoning regulations that you're going to, um, adopt tonight. There's some language in there that will have to be tweaked just a little bit to coincide with the new state law, but what we had before was real close. Um, so nothing is really going to change there.
So, are we still limiting the size of the political signs?
He's got some language in there on the size, um, just for site reasons. Otherwise, and he's got a, a size for residential and then other, um, but we cannot limit it just because it has to be for a safety issue, for safety issues. So, um, we'll be bringing that to you.
So, somebody could put a sign up for, like, just say at a 2020 election, they could put a sign up today and we couldn't restrict?
No, that is a time limit.
There is still a time limit, though.
Yeah. Previously, we had 60, the state, um, law is 45. So, he's written it to coincide with the state law, which is 45 before and two after.
So, there, there are people who already have signs up, so are they technically in violation?
Well, we have a primary, which I think works for 45 days. They're within that.
Well, I'm talking, there's presidential signs already up. I'm just, technically, they'd be in violation then. Okay.
Yeah. So, um, that's all happening.
Yeah. Turn to him. Thank you. Kate, do you have anything for the council to discuss?
Yes. Yes. Don't think about presidential signs, though. The, uh, I want to give you a brief report on what Austin Peters is doing on the recruitment of the city administrator. The, uh, they've placed announcements in the Kansas League of Municipalities, the Association of Counties, and also with the League of Missouri, Iowa, Nebraska, and Oklahoma municipalities. They've also posted, uh, ads, uh, or notices with the Kansas Association of City and County Management, as well as with, uh, the graduate and master programs at KU, the Kansas State U and, uh, Wichita State. So, and, uh, so far, they have received, uh, seven resumes, but this was of last Tuesday, a week ago, and, uh, the deadline is going to be the 15th of July. So, you are beginning to get some resumes. Uh, Austin Peters would like to deliver the candidate screening report to you on, uh, July 22nd. And, uh, Marla Flint is asking for a special council meeting on the 26th of July to, uh, confer on those screening reports and share with you what's been received, how they, how they match up with the, uh, requirements of the advertisements, and to identify finalists that you might want to interview. And then on August, the week of August 8th, uh, they'd like to set up, uh, interviews for candidates. So, that's, that's that.
Okay.
So, it's moving on? It is. Thank you.
Have we heard anything else back on any of the other? We have the water meeting. Is there anything you've heard back from any of the districts?
No. Districts 2 and 3 have not responded. They do have, uh, another week or so to do that. So, uh, we've heard nothing at this point, though. Well, thank you. Okay. Next item on our public hearing, uh, Eric Burks with, uh, NCK Tech and Dale Gingler wants to address the council about their truck routes, their CDL truck routes. There's been a few issues and they want to kind of let us know why they're going certain routes and who dictates where they go.
Good evening. My name's Eric Burks. I think I know most of you here, but, uh, I'd introduce Dale Gingler, our CDL instructor. And so, uh, we've had a couple of concerns expressed to us, uh, about our truck routes that have been, have been changed since the construction started on Highway 14. Typically, we've went down that route and not had to go on some of the places that we currently are. Um, a lot of people don't realize this, but, uh, we don't just crawl in the truck and say, "Hey, why don't you turn left up here," whatever. It's a prescribed route by the state of Kansas. The Department of Motor Vehicles came out. We proposed a route. They made alterations to that route and said, "This is the route that you're going to do." And that's also what they approved for the examination. So, we have students that are actually examining. That's the route that they're expecting. There has to be so many right-hand turns and left-hand turns, and Dale knows a lot more about it, and lane changes and railroad tracks and all those things. Different aspects of driving. And so, um, you know, we had tried to do due diligence to make sure that, uh, we had a route that was going to work. Uh, one of the things that they initially wanted us to do was to go on East 8th Street and pull trucks up onto that highway. Well, that's been a dangerous intersection historically and, uh, a lot of people also don't know this, but you can't change gears when you're going through an intersection or else you'll fail the examination. And so, to have trucks pulling uphill in first gear out on the 55 mile an hour traffic is probably not in anyone's best interest. So, that was when they decided to divert it onto North Hersy, which is not a designated truck route, but it is a safer route. And so, that's, uh, that's why that decision was made. But anyway, um, there's been some complaints that we filled in. Uh, police officer, Chief Neelam has been in. We've had a couple of other officers that have talked to us. And once we've explained it to them, they're like, "Oh, well, that makes sense. Um, but maybe we need to make the public aware of what's going on." So, this really isn't something that we need action from the council or anything like that. It's just an awareness. We want you to understand. I guess it's part of the price we pay for progress. We're all going to enjoy, uh, 14 being much better, hopefully. Um, but in the meantime, we've got to find some way, and this is what the state has dictated as our route. And so, just wanted to explain that to you. Dale, did you have anything else to add? And Dale's here, in case you ask me a question, Lloyd, that I can't answer.
My question is, when 14 opens, are you going to go back to the old route or?
We will, yeah. The sooner the better. Dale, actually, I think the word he uses was hate. "I hate this current route."
One of those complaints was mine because it goes right by my, front of my house.
Yeah. I, I, my father-in-law lives right next door to you, so I tried to choose that route so it'd annoy him. I didn't realize it was going to.
I got that worked out with him. I'm good.
No, actually, we tried to say that it should go down Western and they, they said, "No, they want it Highland." And so, that was, uh, one of the alterations to the route that the state DMV, uh, had made for us. So, we're kind of at their mercy a little bit on this in order for our, in order for the people to pass the test, to have a valid license, it has to be an approved examination route.
Are there hours limitations on when you're allowed to drive the route or is it in 20, for any time you want, basically?
Uh, I don't know that there are limitations. I couldn't really speak to that, but I know that we're pretty much doing during business hour because that's when, when we have.
Yeah, that's when, that's when we're, we're training only from, we start training at, at 8:00 a.m. and we're done. Usually, we try to have our students gone by around 4:00. I mean, if we're by there past 4:00 o'clock, it's a rarity. I mean, so, uh...
How many times, Neil, do you go on that route during the day? Or say?
It depends on the, on the day, uh, on the heaviest. Some days, we don't go at all. Uh, tomorrow, we'll go once on Wednesdays. Uh, it's just kind of how the, our curriculum's set up with, uh, Thursdays, we probably won't be, we'll probably won't be by at all on Thursdays. Friday, we won't be up by, uh, because we don't train typically on Friday.
So, it's not a case that you're going down those streets 10 times a day?
Not normally. There's, there's days, like at Tuesdays is our heavy drive days, uh, because Wednesdays is test day. So, Tuesdays are our heaviest day and we'll probably, we could probably push seven or eight times on a Tuesday. Uh, but that's going to be our maximum day. Uh, I'd say we can go, I know we'll do it once tomorrow, uh, more likely one Thursday and guarantee you it'll be Friday because we don't have any students. And then start Monday, we'll do it maybe five or six times, maybe on Monday, and then Tuesdays probably seven or eight times, and then we'll take her back on again.
Seven times per truck or seven times?
Well, we're only running one truck right now.
You have had been running two?
At, at times. At times, uh, we're, uh, actually just up hired a new instructor, uh, to replace Kirby Shamber retiring and, uh, so I brought our student level numbers back just to get the new instructor up to speed. So, uh, right now, he's not up to speed to be able to drive the truck or ride with the, the students. So, it's pretty much just me and there's only one of me. So, it means there has to be an instructor with a student at all times. So, um, we really try to, you know, we don't, we're not allowed to speed. We, we, we've slowed down through these areas, uh, just to make sure that we're as safe as we possibly can be. And as, as Ariens already indicated, I absolutely hate this route. I, I despise it, um, but I, I don't have a choice in matter. They, they came, like you said, we gave, they, we gave them a recommendation and this is the route they came back with. Uh, so...
I, I could see them out there on these days.
Yeah. That would be a dangerous situation.
Pop the clutch, truck dies and it goes backwards.
Yeah.
To be getting or driving. That's tough for a, you know, it's tough for a, you know, driver who's got some experience.
So, we're, we're just asking that please be patient with us. Um, you know, I know we don't like being where we're at, um, but we will, as soon as 14 Highway is reopened, we will go back to the old route, uh, as soon as we can, believe me, the earlier the better. So, I guess, is there any other questions for, for either of us or, or concerns?
Katie, is there anything we would need to do for?
Uh, you know, we could certainly, you know, put something in the paper to that effect or, um, NCK Tech, NCK Tech could do that, but I'm sure with this, our local press will probably get it out, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what we were kind of hoping for, you know, I should get online.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks. That was good, too.
Did this, did this take you guys by surprise, Eric, or, I mean, did you guys kind of have to scramble to get another route or?
No, we knew it was coming. We knew it was coming. So, we have the state DMV.
I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
Uh, I talked to Mr. Porter over at, uh, Swambeaton several times, was, uh, getting updates from him of when, uh, when they were actually going to close 14. As, as we all know, there was a couple of delays there to get that project started. And, uh, so as soon as he was able to let me know when, you know, pretty much when that project started is when we had to reroute, uh, because we have to list our route with, I'd say, the state of Kansas picked that route and it's listed on their, their testing website. So, that's, we had to inform the state when we had, when we switched also, so...
And I guess if we were to apologize for anything, really, it'd be just that we didn't have this conversation earlier with you, so, uh, we'll learn from that and make sure that, uh, we're more proactive that way next time. But, uh, yeah, so like you said, it was really out of our control for the most part.
Those trains are good, some good trains because that's the best route to navigate through all that stuff. It's probably long, however.
I agree. And like I say, I, I apologize to anybody that, that were upsetting. Uh, that was not our intention at all.
My complaint was, I just didn't know and I didn't talk to them.
Yeah. And, uh, and the officers at King and Santa's, they, they were a little bit, you know, they're fielding complaints and, and so after we kind of informed them what our rules are, uh, you know, then it, then it kind of increased. So...
So, I hope you guys are performing a very valuable service to more essential Kansas by offering that program. So, I'm glad we, you know, communication's great and we want to help you guys continue to be successful. So, thank you for coming.
And it is an unloaded truck. If you have any questions about that, yes, the, the semi weighs more, but I told Tom when I called him the other day, I take my SUV with all my kids and it weighs more than that semi. But, you know, we appreciate your understanding and if you can help field any, if you field any complaints, if you can help spread the word, we'd appreciate it. Certainly, they can come visit with me. So, I'd be fine with that, so.
Again, I thank both of you for coming.
You bet.
Thank you, y'all.
I can give you a call. Okay, sounds good. I got, maybe I don't want to.
Next item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. And if you'll see, if there's a handout with the updated, uh, minutes, and it, uh, had a, the correction in there was, a motion was made by Council Miller to adopt the new zoning reg and district map for the city of Lloyd, adopting the zoning district within a two-mile territorial, uh, zoning jurisdiction as written. The motion failed for lack of a second. That is the change.
Somebody with a second, that wouldn't have been three more seconds.
Well, we can have to rewrite it. But, anyway, that's what the change in the minutes is.
Good. We approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second?
Been moved by Councilman Latrell that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety and it was seconded by Councilman Ponto. Is there any further discussion?
Okay.
No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote on that, please?
Ponto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is ordinances and ordinance 2187, insurance proceeds. Uh, and there's no direct cost of this. Katie, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, this is, um, where this came from. We've always had this, or I shouldn't say always, but for quite some time, we've had the insurance proceed, um, in our city code where if there's a fire, damage by fire, things like that, then a lien is created. The legislature made this change primarily because of the seismic activity that's happening mostly south of us. Uh, they wanted to expand that, um, to announce any damage to the home, uh, not just fire, wind, or explosion. So, that was kind of the reasoning behind this legislation. All the language is the same except for 7601, um, I think. Yes. Everything else is the same as what was in our prior city code.
Any other questions? So, moved. Been moved by Councilman Grabon that we accept ordinance 2187, the insurance proceeds, and it was seconded by Councilman Miller. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Uh, Mandy, would you please take another roll call vote?
Latrell?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is ordinance 2188, zoning regulations and zoning map.
Just one comment on this. Those regulations, uh, Hanaqueela needs to go in and remove the map that has the two-mile and then they need to remove the agricultural zoning district that we had outside. So, that's currently in the works. So, this ordinance will be attached to those new zoning regulations. So, I don't have them to show you, but I can tell you that the only change is we're excluding that two-mile and we're keeping all the regulations for within the city and the, and the map that you've seen previously for within the city. So, hopefully, they'll have that done here pretty soon.
Any other questions? Comment? So, moved. It's been moved by Councilman Grabon that we approve ordinance 2188, adopt the new zoning regulations and zoning map within the city limits of the area and excluding zoning regulations in the two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. That's seconded. Seconded by Councilman McMillan. Any further discussion? Mandy, would you please take another roll call vote?
Ponto?
Yes.
Ponto?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Gingler?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the housing bid for the housing rehabilitation, demolition, CBVG. And we have a recommendation to approve the demolition bids from Gensen Act Service in the amount of $10,000 for two demolition units. Heather, you want to make a comment?
Uh, only if there's any questions. We, we kind of ran short on time. We'd asked for an extension of six months and we were only granted four months. Um, and so, we're a little concerned about the time. If, if we need to, we'll go back and ask for another two months from the state. And that's all because it happened right in the middle of the storm and we had a hard time getting contractors at the beginning. Demo bids have come in really good. We've had a lot of bids, so...
Any other questions for Heather?
The fact that this company is in town is the only reason that they're getting the bid. Because they were one of the higher.
Right. Um, the timeliness of some of the other ones were in question when we, when we checked some references, so this'll be a, we know these guys will be pretty quick.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to approve the housing bid for rehabilitation, demolition, CBVG, uh, approved by Councilman Miller.
That would be seconded by?
Seconded by Councilman McMillan. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the health insurance renewal with, uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. Um, so, we're having to dip into the reserves to pay the new increase in premium. How, how healthy is our reserve going to be after we, we approve them? Are, are we, are we going to be able to do this again next year or?
Um, some, yeah. Um, if it stays the same, um, probably, but it doesn't hurt that we got that money back the last couple of years.
got that money back the last couple of years. And basically, it's just, they were paying out more claims than what we paid in premiums. Plus, we got that $500,000 back over the course of two years. And, you know, in all fairness and stuff, I mean, it's kind of what it's for, I suppose, and so.
I agree. I'm just wondering how long we can, we can do this.
Uh, well, the good news is, is since we changed the renewal dates, we can kind of see it coming better. Like, since I know now in June, instead of guessing of how much it's gonna be, we could probably do it. Uh, that's the way it's set up for next year anyways.
But if it keeps going up?
No, it's not sustainable after that. So.
Make a motion.
Motion been made by Councilman Addy that we approve the fully funded health insurance in the amount of $750,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ponto. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Uh, the next one is the appointment of Charlie Wright as second assistant fire chief, uh, recommended by Chief Miller. It's been moved by Councilman Gingler that we approve the, uh, appointment of Charlie Wright as second assistant fire chief. Is that a second? Seconded by Councilman Grabon. Any discussion? No discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
Been moved by Councilman Ponto that we adjourn. Do we have a second? Been seconded by Councilman McMillan. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We'll now go into the adjourn, the work section. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jay?
No, sir.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then we stand adjourned.
Andrew's house.
Yeah. Maybe we saw that time to get over.
We're bringing the fireworks.
I won't tell whoever that's excited or not, you know.
It's my wife you're gonna be dealing.